Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. We're here for a public hearing on Thurston County Conservation District's proposed system of rates and charges. It's Tuesday, December 10, 2024. It is 2:04 PM. My name is Ty Mencer, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier on Zoom. To my left, Commissioner Gary Edwards. To my right, Commissioner Carolina Mejia. Commissioner Klaus is excused at a training for new elected officials today, this afternoon. So, the purpose of the public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on a proposed system of rates and charges. It's a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person by Zoom, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, please visit Thurston County homepage online, select announcements of public hearings on the left-hand side. Information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would still like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Sarah Moorhead, Executive Director of the Thurston Conservation District, will provide some background information on this topic and ask for any questions of the Board. Thank you for being here. Public comment will be received in person first, and then folks on Zoom will be given opportunity. I'll read your name aloud. You do not need to sign up in any specific way. You'll have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record. So with that, we will open the public hearing, and I'll invite Ms. Moorhead to the podium with Mr. Johnson. Welcome.
Surprise.
Very good.
Yeah, I'm just gonna offer a couple of comments before turning it over to Sarah. First off, thank you for holding the hearing on rates and charges. This is an incredibly important funding source for us because it helps us get other funding.
Can you introduce yourself?
Yeah, I was gonna do that next. I'm TJ Johnson. I'm the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, and with us today, we also have three other Board members, David Ayell, Doug Rushton, and Mary Ann Tompkins. I think, I'm not gonna get into the details because Sarah will talk about that, but I just wanna, just a little bit of context here. When we came as a district before the Board five years ago for rates and charges funding, it was a very different organization. We had far fewer staff, we had a much smaller budget, and we had far fewer projects in the works around the community. And over the last five years, which is my time on the Board and also the duration of this rates and charges authorization, we have grown dramatically. Our funding has gone up exponentially. We have more staff, and most importantly, we have more community impacts and more projects going on than we've ever had in our 76-year history. And when I say our funding has gone up, it's important to note that none of that was additional funding from Thurston County residents. We have our bait rates, rates and charges funding. All of that other money was made possible by being able to leverage the money that we got through the county. So, it's been a great time of growth for the organization, and our work is getting noticed. We've gotten statewide recognition from other conservation districts, from the Washington State Conservation Commission, from the Washington Association of Conservation Districts for our efficiency, our effectiveness, our creativity, and our leadership. And just in closing, we also completed a state audit a couple of months ago in which we had no findings and no management recommendations. So I can tell you that this organization is on the right track, and I'm personally proud to be a part of the success. And now I'll give it to Sarah.
Thanks TJ. And could we advance this slide? That's you? Perfect. Awesome. Gosh, it feels so good to be back in here. Hi, how are you doing, guys? It has been a short and long five years, and I'm so excited to be standing where we're at today to tell you all of the great things that we've done in the last five-year investment of rates and charges because, gosh, we are a completely different district than when you saw us in here talking about this last time. And boy, have we done a lot of work. Perfect, thank you. So, just really quickly, for those that may be less familiar, who is Thurston Conservation District? I just wanna share, not exactly what we do, but who we are. Our vision at Thurston Conservation District is to create healthy functioning ecosystems in Thurston County through advocacy, education, technical assistance efforts, and we want to empower every citizen in Thurston County to be a steward of the environment. We've been a longstanding community partner of Thurston County, and we work hand-in-hand with many of your departments on a lot of these shared goals. Thurston County, or Thurston CD is an accessible hub of natural resources and agricultural expertise for everyone within our region. And like TJ mentioned, for over the last 75 years, our local team has connected people to these free and low-cost services to help provide them with, to help them practice conservation where they are. And that's whether they're in a farm, or they live in a neighborhood, and everywhere in between. And we have really big plans for the future for serving our community. For many decades, we've heard about the value of creating conservation demonstrations in a space to convene and educate community members and pull people together to have, you know, tough conversations about how we wanna manage our landscape. We've already begun work on securing this land to build this community-driven dream of a conservation education center. So what is rates and charges exactly? Rates and charges refers to county-approved fees that residents pay to cover the services that we provide to the community. These rates and charges were determined originally by a rate study that the Conservation District performed, which calculated the costs of the services that TCD provides, and the indirect and direct benefits of such services that community members realize, and then discussed the best way to recover these services, such as a per parcel or a per acre fee. This study, way back in 2017, determined that the full cost of recovery of our services to the community was much higher than the cap that is allowed in statute for rates and charges. And so, our proposal today is a renewal of these sort of historic rates and charges with no increases. TCD is proposing a renewal of our existing $5 per parcel and 10 cents per acre rate, and we're proposing a duration of 10 years. And why are these rates and charges so important? Well, the proposed system of rates and charges is really the linchpin for TCD, to deliver these conservation services at a county-wide scale, especially as the complexities of land planning and natural resource management increases, as I know we all are feeling. Conservation districts are all about public service, not private profit. And as such, our budgets are tied directly to public funding and project-specific grants. We can't pursue any kind of commercial activities that aren't directly related to our mission to generate sustainable funding for our organization, and that's really where rates and charges comes in. When I came to you guys in 2019, rates and charges made up about 50% of our budget at that time. Over the last five years, as TJ has mentioned, we have grown dramatically. One more slide, thank you. You might have to click a few. Two more. One more. Thank you. So roughly 9% now of TCD's annual budget comes from rates and charges. So we went from 50% to 9%. For every dollar that's collected, TCD brings in another $10 to Thurston County from state and federal sources. We have just leveraged our rates and charges dollars all over the place to bring so much more investment to natural resource management, to Thurston County. We are the proud recipient of these state, federal, and other grants, but rates and charges is so critical because these other revenue sources can be volatile and fluctuate from year to year. Currently, we are aware that Washington State is facing a $10 to $12 billion budget deficit in the next four years, and we wanna minimize those impacts on Thurston County residents by continuing to provide this continuity and stability of services. In addition, sometimes grant criteria can be rigid or disconnected from our local priorities, which makes it really difficult to be able to continue, to be a community-driven organization and put our money where the needs of our residents are. As you can see, this is just an example of a property tax statement back in 2019, demonstrating that our rates have not changed since then. And you can see the little arrow on the side is where a conservation district shows up on that. Next slide, please. So I just wanna summarize that over the last 75 years, TCD has been a go-to organization for our community members and partners to learn about and steward our shared natural resources. This system of rates and charges is the most stable and appropriate revenue source for public services that we provide to our community members, and really is the linchpin that allows us to garner these competitive grant fundings and leverage that and bring in additional revenue to Thurston CD. And so to achieve these goals, like retaining open space, preserving agriculture, managing the impacts of growth, people in every corner of Thurston County need access to our conservation services. We are proposing that $10 per parcel and 10 cents per acre rate, which is a renewal of our historic for the duration of 10 years. And just a final thought, I will say, and we can move to the next slide, is over 79% of Thurston County is privately owned, and our population is approaching 300,000. We can't expect to have healthy natural resources and farmland without informed public involvement in conservation. And thus voluntary incentive-based and community-driven approach is what TCD brings to the table. So I just wanna express a lot of gratitude for the community members that are here, for the community that has supported our journey and our increase in services and access, and I wanna express a lot of gratitude to our partners at Thurston County and to the support that we've received from the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Did you by any chance make a mistake? And it's $5 per parcel, isn't it?
It is $5 per parcel and 10 cents per acre. So on that property tax statement that you saw, it's a five acre.
I thought that was a test to see if we.
Our accountant snuck that in.
You said $10.
10. Look at the, read, but don't listen.
That's okay, Sarah.
Any other questions for Sarah before I let her sit down?
I have one other question. So what would, what dollar amount do you get per year from this continuation?
Yeah, it's about $558,000 annually.
And so then you end up with about $5 million by the time you go out?
Right. So annually over time. So yeah, it comes in and gets put into that year's budget.
Do you have any idea how much salmon enhancement or that you're doing with that? I mean, just could you give us a, just a rough idea?
Yeah, so we utilize a lot of this funding to write a lot of our competitive grants and put in the legwork ahead of time to apply for it. I will say that we are really excited because this year, we have completed our largest salmon recovery project to date, in part because we have had rates and charges to help us organize staff up and apply for these larger competitive grants. That project total was $8 million, and it covered two and a half miles of river. So it's a pretty powerful magnifying source of funding.
Am I correct that you're a partner in the proposal? It's like there's sort of a comprehensive dischutes restoration up and down in the watershed. I just was briefed on it by RIA13 Coordinator, and TCD is a partner in that, correct?
That's correct.
I know there's a lot of groups that are working together.
Yeah.
I do have a question. So is this a one-time increase, or are you wanting to kind of tie it up just as we're moving through the years, tying it up to CPI? What is?
So our rates are capped right now in state law, and they cannot increase without an act of legislative change. So this is a renewal and a replacement of our existing rate system that ends on December 31 of this year. There will, there's no opportunity under the current law for that to fluctuate or increase during the duration of that process.
If such a legislative action were to occur, say in five years, if we approved this for 10 years, but five years, the legislature changes it, we would probably wanna have language in that legislation that would allow for our rates to be adjusted at that time. I'm just thinking ahead. That'd be something we would take up at that time, maybe?
I think that is definitely a conversation to have with our Board of Supervisors, with the County Commissioners. There is no automatic mechanism that would increase the rates, even if the legislation has changed. So once they're set by these two governing bodies, that is what it is. If the state law allows for a localized cap, of which there is a lot of interest in, I'll be honest, there is a lot of interest in that kind of conversation happening at the local level rather than the state level. This sort of, this same process would occur again to discuss that conversation. Do rate studies establish rates? The Board of Supervisors making a proposal to the County Commissioners, and the County Commissioners considering if that's an appropriate rate level.
Okay. Good to go. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
To the public testimony portion of the hearing, and we have signed up? Great. Start with folks on who've signed up, and I'll call who's first, and I'll call who's should be ready to go next. And it's Jennifer Colvin first with Betsy Norton on deck.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm Jennifer Colvin. I own and operate Colvin Ranch, just outside of Tonino, where we raise grass-fed, grass-finished beef. We provide our beef to the Thurston County Food Bank that's distributed out throughout the community. We also supply the majority of school districts in our county with our grass-fed, grass-finished beef, in addition to selling to local families and consumers as well. My family's been ranching here in Thurston County for a long, long time. I'm fifth generation in my family to be working at Colvin Ranch. And for decades, the Conservation District has been a really important partner for what we do at the ranch. So the majority of our time outside of taking care of our animals is taking care of our land and working on conservation projects. We have done conservation projects to improve our watershed environment, to help create more clean water from the stream that runs through our property, to enhance habitat for endangered species like the Mazzama pocket gopher, and to help establish new populations of plants like the golden paintbrush, which we were successful in helping contribute to that program. So we were able to get that plant removed from the list of federally endangered and threatened species. So we've had a lot of successes with these kinds of habitat restoration and conservation projects, but we could not undertake these on our own. The only way that we are able to work on projects like that is because we get the help and support from the Conservation District. So they provide us with the knowledge and expertise that we don't have necessarily to do these projects. They provide us with the support. They're able to provide grant funding to help contribute to these projects, and they've just been a really integral partner for us and other ranches like us in the county. You know, the projects that we, these conservation projects that we do at the ranch, you see the benefits extend beyond our property boundaries. So the kinds of restoration and habitat protection work we're doing benefits the larger ecosystem in our community. So when we're able to provide that habitat for endangered species and help ensure that other species don't end up on that endangered list, the entire community benefits. So we're just really grateful for all of the expertise and the support of the Conservation District. The fact that they are able to leverage their money to bring in so much more in grant funding makes a huge difference for producers like me. So I'd highly encourage you to please continue your support of them, as we certainly support their, what their request is for their rates and charges. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Betsy Norton on deck. Melinda Holman.
Hi, my name's Betsy Norton. I live at 1405 Evergreen Park Drive Southwest in Olympia. I believe the TCCD is increasingly important to the community as climate change progresses, especially since they're explicitly tasked via their RCW 89.808 with measures that address property compliance with Clean Water Act standards. This is in the context of the incoming administration at the federal level, which has pledged to dismantle the EPA, basically. It's important for Thurston County to properly fund the TCCD in the immediate and the longer term for this reason. I urge you to, when I was looking at your documentation, it looks like the base rates are based on an analysis from 2017. So I would encourage you to increase those base rates based on the CPI, which would bring them from $5 to $6.50 and from $2.50 to $4 respectively. If possible, I guess it may not be possible, I'd like you to tie it to the CPI so they continue to have the same value of funding going up for the next 10 years so they don't end up under budget. So, thank you very much.
Chair, could you clarify, so she doesn't think we're ignoring her comment, but we don't have any authority to do that? That's what Sarah said.
That we would not have the authority to have a CPI inflator? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Melinda Holman, Rhonda Larson, Kramer on deck.
Hello, County Commissioners. My name is Melinda Holman, and I live in District 1. And I'm here because the TCD is close to my heart. I'm a fifth-generation farming family in Oregon from a small logging and farming town, and I've attended in the past the Board of Supervisors meetings. It's been a while, but today I'm on, here on my behalf and on behalf of Olympia Indivisible. I'm submitting our organization's comment to today's rates and charges public hearing. We're asking you to vote in favor of the Thurston Conservation District funding proposal of rates and charges. Olympia Indivisible was founded in 2017 and is 100% grassroots civic engagement group of over 800 members now in Thurston County. Climate protection, environmental sustainability are among our core values, and we strongly support the work of the Thurston Conservation District. Their services are vital in educating citizens throughout the county to become informed stewards of our natural resources and farmlands through free or low-cost programs. Adequate funding is essential for the TCD to achieve their goals of retaining open spaces, preserving agriculture, inspiring community-based water and soil conservation efforts, and managing the impacts of growth. So I thank you for the hearing, and on behalf of the Steering Committee, I strongly urge you, and on my own personal behalf, with a deep heart for agriculture, I encourage and applaud the amazing growth and work that you folks have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Rhonda Larson, Kramer. And then I'll call for other folks who didn't get a chance to sign up.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Larson Kramer. I live at 1814 East Side Street Southeast in Olympia. I ask that you please support the proposed rates and charges for Thurston Conservation District. I wanted to give people a small taste of the amazing work that the Thurston Conservation District does. TCD collaborates with landowners to develop flood storage projects in the Chehalis Basin to create resiliency against future flood events. TCD has begun work to create fire-resilient communities through 50 home site assessments to reduce the risk of devastating impacts of wildfire to people and property. And TCD is the go-to organization for community members who need help with land management. My family has owned 20 acres of forest land here for 54 years, and so I can attest to that. Not only does TCD provide a wide variety of programs and services to fit all unique land management needs, but it is a hub to connect residents with many partner organizations to collaboratively put conservation on the ground. And TCD has a great podcast called Conservation Starters. If you haven't heard it, I highly recommend that you listen. It's something I look forward to every month. They talked today, that I listened today, about rentals of equipment. So you can rent a weed wrench to pull out the Scotch broom. You can rent 15 shovels to have a work party on your land with all your neighbors. So if TCD's funding agreement is renewed, it would increase TCD's capacity to support farmland preservation, support working farms in our community, and work to address immediate natural resource concerns. I hope you will vote for this funding agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the boardroom who didn't get a chance to sign up who would like to provide? Doug?
Thank you. I'm Doug Rushton. I live on the South Bay area, and I urge support for this proposition. The way I think about it is, I have five acres, $5.50. That's a latte. I'm more than happy to give that up. I would point out, too, the services that we do to the community as well as the natural resources. It's people we serve who manage the natural resources, and I think that's an important distinction. I have a couple other roles. I sit on the Executive Committee for the Washington Association of Conservation Districts, and also on their Board, and also on the National Association of Conservation District Boards. So I get to interact with the other 38 counties, the 44 other districts, and the 2,986 districts across the US. And we're doing really well at Thurston CD. I talk with a lot of people. They come to us for advice and guidance and good examples of how to do some stuff. I've been on the Board since 1994, and I think right now we're in better shape than we ever have been in serving the community and using the money wisely. Thank you.
Online, does it have anybody who'd like to provide public comment? Go ahead, sir. Tom?
Thank you, Commissioners, staff, guests. Good afternoon. My name is Tom Salzer, and I serve Washington's 45- Good afternoon, my name is Tom Salzer, and I serve Washington's forty-five Conservation Districts as the Executive Director of their state association. You may not be aware that the Thurston Conservation District is a well-regarded leader in our statewide network of forty-five Conservation Districts. As you just heard, Doug Rushton is a longtime W A C D board member, and Sarah Moorhead has been recognized by W A C D for her incredible leadership. T C D shows up, brings people together, and creates solutions that benefit your communities. I speak today simply to express W A C D's confidence in Thurston Conservation District and our hope that you will agree their work is worth supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? That's all I see online, so. Okay, we also had a packet of fourteen written comments that were all in favor of supporting the rates and charges, so it's pretty unanimous. So with that, any discussion from the board before we close the public hearing and consider action on the proposed.
I, I do have a question in regards to, um, one of our public Betsy's comment, uh, for the twenty-seventeen analysis that the rates were based on it, and I kind of want to hear from Sarah on the reasoning behind that, and.
Yeah, so, uh, your question, Commissioner Mahia, might be, why have we not done a new rates analysis? Our services have just continued to expand and diversify, but because the rate collection amount is capped in state law, we know that the cost to provide these services continues to increase, but we're not able to recover that at an increased rate because of this state legislation. So because of that, we've continued to seek outside grant funding to support and fill those gaps to provide the services needed from our community. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so it's kind of like a double whammy, right? You can't increase it as, as years go by, and you have to stick with a previous assessment. You can't go with a CPI for twenty twenty-four, for example.
Not under the current state law. Um, this has been a problem in a lot of other spaces, to be really honest, as Conservation Districts have increased in the services that they're providing, as support for voluntary conservation has been invested in more and more at our state level. There, there is that concern that these rates are capped by state law, which is a population criteria-based cap, and we're one of, we're in the smallest tier here in Thurston County. Um, so there is conversation, again, um, at amending that legislation statewide to have that conversation be set, rates set locally by local governing jurisdictions, the, the county and the, um, Conservation Districts. But again, that would take statutory change before that could happen, and right now, that $5 per parcel and 10 cents per acre is the, is the flat cap.
Yeah, come on into the mic.
Our board actually talked about whether to do a updated rate study or not, and for the reasons Sarah cited, we decided not to. But there was another reason, because our board is very cognizant of the cost of such studies, and we're always pushing the staff to make sure that our limited budget goes to provide as many direct services to the community as it can, and not to do consultant studies. So that's kind of where we're coming from all the time, as we talk about whatever we're talking about with staff. Like, what is the impact on the community, and how can we get the most bang for our buck and serve the community?
Discussion items. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Let's move.
Second.
Second, a call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closes the public hearing, and now we have a proposed, uh, action to take, if we were, if we're ready to take such an action.
I would move to approve a resolution approving a system of rates and charges for the Thurston Conservation District on properties within the boundaries of unincorporated Thurston County, Yom Rehne, Tonino, and within Lacey, Olympia, and Tomwater, as they exist, existed at the time of formation of the Thurston Conservation District, nineteen forty-seven, for a period of ten years, beginning collection in January twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four, as proposed, in Thurston County. Thurston Conservation District Resolution Number two zero two four dash oh three.
Second.
Motion and second to approve this resolution approving a system of rates and charges for the Thurston Conservation District. Is there any discussion?
I would.
Oh, okay. Well, having been around the longest, it's good to see things are running good. Thank you.
Yeah, I, uh, just am very thankful for the partnership that the Conservation District has with the county, and, um, my first time working with the Conservation District was as we were, uh, going into a, a meat processing study with Pierce County, and, uh, really, we wouldn't have been able to complete it if it wasn't for the Conservation District's input and alignment, and working with Pierce County's Conservation District as well. And so, just continue to be thankful for the partnership, Sarah.
I agree with my seatmates, uh, the, I recently was able to attend a project tour that was, I don't know who it was aimed for, but I was there, and it was really cool to see all the work on the ground being done. Um, and just anecdotally, I mean, I go everywhere and I'm at all the meetings. I mean, the Conservation District is everywhere. I mean, their, their name comes up, everything I'm doing, you know, I'm, I focus on a lot of environmental work, and the Conservation's front, District is front and center, so much stuff. And, and I've seen that grow as I've gone through the last. So I, when you say that the organization's growing and the impact, I mean, it resonates with me because I, I can feel it out in the community. I hear more, uh, everybody's positive about the work that's being done here. There are not that many issues that involve, like, taxes that, you know, have unanimous support. I mean, we've, no, nobody can even come here and articulate a reason why this is not a, a great investment of community, uh, resources to, um, to, to meet community needs. So, thank you to the Conservation District. I mean, that's incredible, really, like, the, I, I didn't not know until today that you'd taken what was a fifty percent of your budget, and now it's nine percent. I mean, that's incredible. I mean, that's, a lot of organizations do a good job of that, but that's a scale that, you know, is, is impressive. You should be very proud of that. So.
I think Commissioner is aiming to be a judge for the pie tasting next year. I think that's his angle.
I think my record speaks for itself. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and I, you know, with further discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is approved unanimously. We lost Commissioner Fornier, but three to zero is a passing vote, so congratulations.
And I believe Commissioner Fornier was prepared to vote for this. I had heard something about it.
All right, perfect. Thanks, everybody, for being here. We're now adjourned.